Hello, I'm Jay Gervain Bay of Malodian Voice Parade in Antae, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 21. What have we changed in terms of our cadence? We're starting to learn about provincial governments. We're starting to learn the distinction between Moorish nationals who have a state, and those Moors are stateless Moors. So as Moors start coming into the consciousness of international law, and being what's called impopia persona. Impopia persona is only the first box. After that, impopia persona means that now you have an obligation to start understanding nation status, nation state as it relates to politics. So now Moors must start answering the question of, "What is the name of your provincial government?" That is the question to Moors. "What is the name of your provincial government?" By telling other Moors the name of your provincial government, automatically other Moors will start asking questions. "What does that mean?" That tells us about status. So what have we learned thus far in studying what we call France versus United States of America? We've been studying thus far everything about status. Status is all about your capacities and incapacities as it relates to status. Impopia persona is the first box in status. So as we start to wrap up now this ICJ report, today will be the last class on the ICJ report as it relates to France versus United States of America. What have we learned thus far in these classes? What did we learn from Class Number 20? The bottom line is, we learned because Morocco and Moors acquiesced. They were not parties to whatever was going on between France and United States of America. The Moroccan Sultan was not there to talk about whether he accepts or rejects what France or the United States of America was putting on the record. We learned that the Sharifin Authority was not there. We learned that the Moorish Empire was not there to represent itself as it relates to the bilateral treaties of peace and friendship of 1787 and 1836. So therefore, the ICJ, as we start to wrap this up, is struggling with a hard time trying to speak up on behalf of a party that's not present at that time. So what did the ICJ do? They stuck to the strict sense of the treaties, conventions, as well as other discovery documents that was on the record as it relates to the economic, 1948 Economic Trade Agreement that France had put on the record. But what we learned is that Economic Trade Agreement was subordinate to treaties. It all came back to the origin of treaties. And before a treaty can ever, ever be fully ratified, what is the first step in status as it relates to that treaty? Consequency. What we have learned when it comes to treaties, treaties is just a political document. But it's all about status. And what is the first status before you can even ratify a treaty? Nationality. So everything is coming back full circle to whom? Moroccans and Moors, as the ICJ is disclosing, if you really read it, they keep going back to Moroccan Authority. They keep going back to the Sharifin Authority. Everything is about the Sharifin Moroccan Authority and through the Consular Court. That's where all of the laws are enforced. So what did we learn in Class 20? The bottom line is this. The ICJ said the Moors, through acquiescence, by a silent consent called tacit acquiescence, have agreed to allow the United States of America to hold on to its jurisdiction until we say rejection or objection. And how do we say rejection or objection? I.e. renunciation of any of their jurisdiction? It starts with status. And then it goes to nationality, jurisdiction of your constitution and your state. That's the first step in understanding governance, alright? So today, we'll continue on understanding what is our mission and vision? The mission and vision is to create the United States of Morocco. So as Moors start to see other Moors out and about, start asking other Moors, "Hey, Moore, what's the name of your provincial government?" Moors will be a little perplexed at first, "But what do you mean?" That's the next level of degrees that the Moors have to get to now. When we start understanding statehood, that's going to change the entire game, alright? So let's finish up with this ICJ report. What is the purpose of why we're going over the ICJ report? Because as Moors start coming into statehood, Moors must understand what are the fundamentals in order for us to have a defense in dealing with all the foreign powers. The first thing you learn in law is status. Status of your nationality, and then jurisdiction, and through that jurisdiction of holding the proper venue. This entire ICJ report has been about one thing and one thing only, status. So what status is the ICJ putting on the table? They're making three distinctions. They're talking about the French zone. They're talking about the United States of America's jurisdiction. And they're also talking about the Moroccan Sharifin jurisdiction. Three different jurisdictions. Trying to identify who has the original jurisdiction. The original jurisdiction is always Morocco. But the parties must be known. And unfortunately, the party as it relates to Morocco and the Moroccans were unknown at that time in Consular Court, i.e. the ICJ, in 1950 to 1952. So we'll talk about that as we wrap up today. If I have one of the mothers continue with the reading, we'll start from here accordingly.
Accordingly, it is necessary to conclude that apart from the special rights under Article 20 and 21 of the Treaty of 1836, and those which arise from the provisions of the Act of Al-Jaseras to which reference has been made above, the United States claimed to exercise and enjoy as of right Consular jurisdiction with other capitulatory rights in the French zone came to an end with the termination of all rights and privileges of a capitulatory character in the French zone of the Sharifian Empire by Great Britain in pursuance of the provisions of the Convention.
Of 1937. So keep in mind, Moors, what are we reading right now? The ICJ is still taking a look at who has Consular jurisdiction in the French zone. Remember how this started. The ICJ said, "We're only looking at the French zones, a totally different jurisdiction." And we're talking about the soil, the matter of Morocco. So therefore, they're looking at the French zone making decisions, okay? This is all about jurisdiction. ICJ is trying to determine who has jurisdiction. Continue on.
The Court will now consider the claim that United States nationals are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws unless they have first received the assent of the United States government.
Okay. What did we learn about the word assent? We learned that assent means a proper written instrument. That both parties have to sign. One party has to get agreement from the other party in order to enforce law or a contract on another party. What does that mean? A contract must have two signatures. If it's not two signatures, then that's a unilateral contract, an ex parte contract. Why aren't we about to start learning about assent? Keep in mind, Moors, what is this all about? We're learning how to play this chess game that France was playing with the United States of America. So Moors are supposed to watch this chess game and see how France and the United States of America are playing this out based upon the basic fundamentals of using Moroccan treaties. Moors have to learn how to use this treaty the same way France is using it, the United States is using it, and the same way the ICJ is looking at it. You gotta look at it from three different perspectives. The ICJ has a perspective, France has a perspective, and the United States of America has a perspective. Moors must learn from all these advantage points as a referee. Okay? Look at as a referee, what's happening? So what are we learning right now about assent? We're about to learn how do Moors use assent? So we have to look at this and understand how is assent used as it relates to a proper written instrument. Keep in mind, what I've said in previous classes, today's class being Class Number 21, go back to this subject matter as it relates to France versus the United States of America, starting at Class Number 15. So we have 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21. We're wrapping up Class Number 7. Circle 7. Okay, so let's just keep that in mind as we start to read, okay? Let's continue.
The French submission in this regard reads as follows. That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent. That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations in force in the Sharifian Empire, and in particular, the regulation of December 30th, 1948, prior consent on imports not involving an allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States government. The United States submission in this regard reads as follows. Four. Under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco, the United States citizens are not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws.
Stop. What should we be looking for when we're reading this document? Look for the fact the United States is putting on the record some of their crimes against humanity. They just admitted on the record what? That the United States doing what? "Under the regime of extraterritorial jurisdiction now exercised by the United States in Morocco." They're admitting that they're exercising extraterritorial jurisdiction. They're admitting that they're not abiding by the treaty. They're admitting that all Moors are now Negro black in color. They're admitting that they're not abiding by what's called amity and commerce. They're admitting that they're not abiding by what's called the Treaty of Peace and Friendship between the parties. That must be understood. Because of their arrogance, they didn't want to claim extraterritorial jurisdiction. They think it's okay to say that because they think they're a conquering party. However, they just admitted for the record they're not maintaining the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Moors must always keep that in mind. They've already admitted their status. Continue on.
Such laws become applicable to the United States citizens only if they are submitted to the prior assent of the United States government, and if this government agrees to make them applicable to its citizens. The year of December 30th, 1948, not having been submitted to the prior assent of the United States government, cannot be made applicable to the U.S. citizens. The claim that Moroccan laws are not binding on the United States nationals unless assented to by the government of the United States is linked with the regime of capitulations, and it will not be necessary to repeat the considerations which have already been discussed in dealing with Consular jurisdiction. There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case conferring upon the United States any such right. The so-called right of assent is merely a corollary of the system of Consular jurisdiction. The Consular Courts applied their own law, and they were not bound in any way by Moroccan law or Moroccan legislation. Before a Consular Court could give effect to a Moroccan law, it was necessary for the foreign power concerned to provide for its adoption as a law binding on the consul in his jurisdiction, in his judicial capacity. It was the usual practice to do this by embodying it either in legislation of the foreign state or a ministerial or Consular decrees of that state issued in pursuance of delegated powers. The foreign state could have this done, or it could refuse to provide the enforcement of the law. There was a right of assent only to the extent that the intervention of the Consular Court was necessary to ensure the effective enforcement of a Moroccan law as against the foreign nationals.
Stop. What have we learned thus far just by reading this? Let's go back and comprehend, alright? There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case conferring upon the United States any such right. What are they saying? Think about this like a Moore. What are they saying? They're saying there's nowhere in the treaty that says the United States of America gets to have jurisdiction over Moors. Nowhere. They can't prove that they, through a treaty, can come up with a discovery document called a treaty where they can even use interpretations to say that citizens of the United States of America have jurisdiction over Moors. That's number one. You have to understand the first sentence. The so-called, you see what the ICJ says? "The so-called right of assent is merely a corollary of the system of Consular jurisdiction." What's this word, corollary? Corollary, corollary means correlation. Meaning it's assessed to. It's assessed to already something. It's probably always well-settle principles. It means that one thing follows another. Watch this. I'll explain. When you look at the treaty, what the ICJ is saying, "The so-called right of assent is merely a corollary of the system of Consular jurisdiction." The ICJ has already pointed out that Articles 20 and 21 have already covered assent. Why? Because the colonists already set forth in an assent document asking Sidi Mohamed permission to stay in the land. So the assent as it relates to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship was already fully ratified by both parties. So therefore, if it's fully ratified, then that means automatically that the assent has already been addressed. It's not a matter of just Moors have to ask the United States permission to do anything as it relates to Consular Court because that's well-settled principles on the record as of 1786, when Sidi Mohamed signed it first in a Moroccan court in Morocco, and then the United States of America, through their legislation, passed it into their law, local law, 1787. That assent question has already been addressed. So when they say it's corollary, meaning that it correlates already to the treaties, we'll learn more about that, okay, as we continue. Right here. "The Consular Courts applied their own law, and they were not bound in any way by Moroccan law or Moroccan legislation." Who are you talking about? The Consular Court? The United States of America was claiming they had Consular Court. Because they weren't abiding by Moroccan laws. Because they had usurped the Moors. But the ICJ is pointing out, "Well, you were using your own law, saying that you didn't have to go by Moroccan law." Whilst simultaneously saying that you have every rights of a treaty, of a Moroccan treaty. So which one is it, the United States? Well, we don't have to ask that question because you already, because of your assent of the contract of Treaty of Peace and Friendship, you already answered that question. The jurisdiction is already known. It's Moroccan original courts that have Consular jurisdiction, not yours. "Before a Consular Court could give effect to a Moroccan law, it was necessary for the foreign power concerned to provide for its adoption as a law binding on the consul, the consul in his judicial capacity. It was the usual practice to do this by embodying it either in the legislation of the foreign state or in a ministerial or the Consular decrees of the state issued in pursuance delegated powers." The foreign state could have this done, or it could refuse to provide for the enforcement of the law. What's happening here? When it comes to assent, let's keep in mind, what are we talking about right now? The United States of America is claiming the 1886 Treaty gave them jurisdiction. But they're talking Consular Court. But where did they get the Consular Court concept from? The original Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That they're claiming now that they get to oversee because they usurped the Moors. So we're talking Treaty of Peace and Friendship. But wait. They're saying now, we gotta catch what the ICJ is saying. You gotta read it a couple times in order to really see it. Right here. Where it says "it was," "it was the usual practice to do this by embodying it either in the legislation, in the legislation, in the legislation of the foreign state." What's happening? When the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of the year 1786 was signed by Sidi Mohamed, then at that time, under the Constitution of Congress, of the, yeah, Constitution of Congress of 1786, they brought that back to the United States of America and signed it into law in 1787 through their legislation. George Washington talks about this even in his letter, 1789. Let's take a look at it real quick. This will make sense to you. So George Washington's letter to Sidi Mohamed, December 1789. Remember, when you scroll down, he talks about legislation, them signing the treaty into law. The assent is now being signed into law because they were asked permission to stay in the land through that treaty. "In the course of the approaching winter, the national legislature, the national legislature, the national legislature, legislation, which is called by the former name of Congress, i.e. the Constitution of Congress, will assemble, and I shall take care that nothing be omitted that may be necessary to cause the correspondence between our countries to be maintained and conducted in a manner agreeable to your majesty and satisfactory to all the parties concerned in it." What did George Washington say on the record? This is why the ICJ is pointing this out. They said, "Well, watch." Back in the day when George Washington signed, watch. "It was the usual practice to do this," do what? Sign laws through the legislation of your, of who? The foreign state. Watch. "It was the usual practice to do this by embodying it in either in the legislation of the foreign state." George Washington passed legislation through their foreign state, the assent document called the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And the ICJ is pointing out, "This has always been the practice when two states come together, and they put together a document. That document now must go back to the foreign state. They sign it into their domestic legislation. And the Moors also put that into their legislation." Both states now have it on the record. It's called what? Acceptance and accession or ratification. Where does that come from? This right here is Article 2 of the Beatty Convention Treaty of 1969, Article 2. What does Article 2 talk about? This is Article 2 for the purpose of the present convention. Now we're talking, hey, Section A. Treaty means an international agreement concluded between states. So George Washington, the two parties, they concluded what? The treaty. Between two states in writ form and governed by international law. Whether embodied in a single instrument, what's the instrument? The assent document. Or in two or more related instruments, and whatever its particular designation. But here's the catch, right here. Section B. Ratification, acceptance, approval, and accession mean in each case the international act so named whereby a state establishes on the international plane its consent to be bound by a treaty. What does that mean? Let's go back to the document. We gotta understand what assent means. The assent document is a Treaty of Peace and Friendship. The United States of America accepted it. There's no more question about assent because they already agreed to the jurisdiction of Moors. But now suddenly get brand new. Oh, Moors gotta get permission from the United States of America because you guys acquiesced. That's not true. And that's what you're gonna learn about the ICJ as we keep reading, okay? So let's take it from the top. So we start understanding exactly what's happening, what the ICJ is saying, because they're summarizing. "There is no provision in any of the treaties which have been under consideration in this case confirming upon the United States any such right." What right? Jurisdiction over Moors in Morocco. The so-called right of assent, the so-called right of assent is merely a corollary of the system of Consular jurisdiction that the United States of America has already agreed to, Moroccan jurisdiction. "The Consular Courts applied their own law, and they were not bound in any way by Moroccan law or Moroccan legislation." The United States of America created their own laws called statutes. "Before a Consular Court could give effect to a Moroccan law, it was necessary for the foreign power concerned to provide for its adoption as a law binding on the Consular in his judicial capacity." So the United States of America said, "Moors gotta get permission from the United States of America in order to be enforcing their Moroccan laws on the foreign powers, i.e. the Christian powers." "It was usual practice to do this by embodying it in either in the legislation of the foreign state or in a ministerial or Consular decrees of that state issued in pursuance of the delegated powers." The foreign state could have this done, or it could refuse to provide for the enforcement of the law. So the United States right now is saying, "Well, we refuse." To provide by who at the time? Keep in mind, who's the party? France. The United States of America is telling France, "Well, we refuse to listen to you, France." They knew France wasn't who? The Moroccan Authority. That they had a power attorney status, i.e. like a little vice Sultan. They knew they wasn't Moors. So therefore, the United States of America is still trying to hold on to their possession of Moors in Morocco. So there's that stall, deny, defend, be indefensible. We'll keep learning that. Watch what I tell you. It makes sense to you in just a moment. Go ahead, Moore.
In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, or practice. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage and practice as a basis for extended Consular jurisdiction and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is however necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their cooperation.
In corporation.
In corporation, in ministerial decrees binding upon the Consular Courts. In that way, and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against United States nationals so long as the extended Consular jurisdiction was being exercised.
Alright. This is one of the most important articles as it relates to Consular jurisdiction. The ICJ just gave us the answers to the test again. They're talking to the Moors. Don't get me wrong, they're talking to these two parties too. But they're talking about the Moors and third party, alright? Let's really pay attention. "In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom, usage, usage, or practice." That's what the United States is trying to say. So what does the ICJ come out and say? "It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage and practice as a basis for extending Consular jurisdiction." Why did the ICJ say that? They re-summarized, saying what? You're not gonna be able to just keep some perpetual law over Moors. Moors must always have a right for redress to come back to make a claim. So we're not gonna be able to sit here and tell the United States of America, "Yeah, because of capitulation or extraterritorial jurisdiction, you get to maintain it." No. All sovereigns have a right to posthumineum per consequenium. "It is however necessary to point out that the very large number of instances in which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities can readily be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporations in ministerial decrees binding upon the Consular Courts in that way, and in that way only. In that way only." I'm gonna explain that to you. "Could these laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals so long as the extended Consular jurisdiction was being exercised." Where's the ICJ saying? Let's take it from the top. You gotta really slow this down and listen. This is an important article. They're talking in third party. That's why it doesn't necessarily make straight sense to you. "In the absence of any treaty provisions dealing with this matter, It has been contended that a right of assent can be based on custom usage or practice, so. The I C J is gonna throw that out, talking about that whole absentee maritime stuff, get out of here with that. It is unnecessary to repeat the reasons which have been given for rejecting custom usage. And practice as a basis for extending constant jurisdiction. So that means Moors never have to go back to the I C J and argue over custom and usage again, it's well set of principles. Let's continue, and which are largely applicable to the right of assent. It is however necessary to point out that the very large number of instance- instances. And with the Moroccan laws were referred to the United States, what they saying right here? They saying there's been some challenges to the United States based upon Moroccan laws. This has been a conflict of interest for a while. To the United States authorities, it can rarely be explained as a convenient way of ensuring their incorporation, what's the I C J saying? They're saying, listen, Moors, in order to ensure. How to make the United States authorities comply, they give you the answer to the test, they say. In order to get them and their incorporation in ministerial decrees binding upon the consul courts. So in order to get the United States of America to be bound to consul courts, how do you do that? In that way and in that way only could these laws be made enforceable as against the United States nationals? So long as the extended consul jurisdiction was being exercised, so what's happening? I C J is telling Moors, you gotta use consul court and everything you do is a dispute with the United States of America. If you're not doing it, doing it through consul court, listen. If you're not doing it through consul court, it cannot be enforced on the United States of America. You gotta catch what the I C J saying. You must incorporate consul court. But in order to incorporate consul court, you gotta have what? A state. And you can't have a state unless you have a constitution. You can't have a constitution unless your nationality is correct based upon your status as a Moroccan, I E a Moor. So let's read again. From here. It is however necessary to point out tha- that the very large number of instances. In which Moroccan laws were referred to the United States authorities, meaning people been having problems. With the United States that relates to Moroccan laws, it hasn't been working. Can rarely be explained, what they say, it's easy to correct this problem with the United States of America. They said, this is easy to explain to y'all if y'all listen to what we're saying, code it. Conveniently do what? Conveniently do what? Create consul court and make it binding on the United States authorities. You must create consul court to make anything binding on the United States authorities. Because you don't have to get permission from the United States of America, they already agreed to consul court, Article twenty and Article twenty-one of Treaty of Peace and Friendship. They already signed the assent document. Don't let them pull you or fool you, pull you or fool you in the thinking you gotta create some brand new document. When the document is already well set of principles of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That's what the I C J is saying. Why are they saying that? Cause Moors are not there saying it. So they're trying to speak on behalf of Moors without saying the word. They slid that in. How do you enforce jurisdiction on the United States of America? Consul court. Let's continue.
The problem arises in three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to United States nationals would be contrary. To the treaty rights of the United States. In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals. Unless assented to by the United States would be contrary to international law.
Stop, did you catch what happened? You hear what the I C J just told the United States of America? The problem arises in three ways, and we're talking about three ways which must be considered separately. The first is in cases where the application of a Moroccan law to the United States nationals. Will be contrary to the treaty of rights of the United States, that's the United States is saying. We don't have to listen to no Moroccan laws. Watch what the I C J says. In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly. To these nationals unless assented to by the United States will be contrary to international law. Is contrary to international law, what does that mean? What the United States of America is saying is contrary, it's arbitrary and capricious, it's patently frivolous. You don't have, Moors don't have to get the United States of America's permission according to international law. Because the treaty is international law. Based upon human rights of sovereignty. The treaty is what it is, why? Because it's never been renounced. Why? Because the United States of America used it all around the world in order to maintain their mayhem. Continue, mother, from here, and.
And the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with according to the. Ordinary methods for settlement of international disputes. These considerations apply to the decree of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be. Contrary to treaty rights of the United States.
Let's start here, in such cases, the application of Moroccan laws. Whether directly or indirectly to these nationals unless assented to, to by the United States will be contrary to international law. And the dispute which might arise therefrom would have to be dealt with according to the ordinary methods. For the settlement of international disputes, what are they talking about? You gotta bring it to the I C J, but before it gets to the I C J, the I C J is gonna say you need to talk to who? Secretary General of the U N, and the Secretary General of U N is gonna say that you're trying to deal with this settlement and where? Consul court. So international law. Contrary to this international law. Means that first, you have to settle this dispute locally between two states before you bring it to the U N. The Secretary General at that point will make a recommendation to go to the I C J if they can't settle it. So international law is all about a treaty, if you look up the definition of treaty, it says, first thing you see is international law. Treaty is international law. Consul court is international law. Because consul court is dealing with disputes of two separate states, two separate jurisdictions. So everything goes back to international law and international law has subparts talking about treaties, conventions, declarations. In order to enforce that, you gotta have a constitution that already set up your state. So let's get an understanding of the first case. First case in this case, cases, in cases where the application of Moroccan law to the United States nationals. Will be contrary to treaty rights of the United States. What are they saying? This, the United States of America is pulling out Article twenty-four, it talks about application of differences. Application of differences, right? So that's the United States is using a Moroccan treaty for their own defense, that's what they're talking about right now. The United States of America is saying that someone's violating their treaty rights. Imagine that. France is violating the United States of America's treaty rights, the United States of America is using a Moroccan treaty for their defense. In such cases, the application of Moroccan laws, whether directly or indirectly to these nationals unless assented to by the United States. Will be contrary to international law, the United States of America is trying to say, there ain't anything contrary is notwithstanding. Imagine that. Anything contrary to the Moroccan treaty law. Is contrary, because France is trying to enforce something on the United States. And then, the United States of America got the audacity to go back to the treaty to say, France, you ain't doing something right. Cause according to the treaty, it says, you can't tax us. Imagine that, the audacity. Moors been trying to get the United States of America to abide by the treaty, the United States of America is like, what treaty? While the international forum, the United Amer- the United States of America knows the treaties are only thing keeping them in existence on planet earth. Okay, let's talk about this dispute, and the dispute which might arise therefrom. Will have to be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes. How do you deal with an international dispute, dispute? Consul court. If consul court can't take care of it, then you go to the U N. These considerations apply to the decree of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight, which the court has found to be. Contrary to the treaty rights of the United States, what happened? France, we're talking France now, in the United States. France had a dispute. Did they go through consul court? No. They brought their dispute to the I C, to the United Nations Secretary General. Consul court has the original jurisdiction. But then the I C J turns around and throws out consul court of Morocco because it had been tainted, compromised. So there was no neutral party as it relates to the consul court of Moroccan laws. So there's no Moroccan law. To deal with these two separate foreign states. So I C J is like, how do we deal with this? Now the I C J has gotta make a decision, cause there was no consul court being used. As the ordinary principles of what you deal with when you have disputes of state on state dispute. Alright, let's continue.
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the. The cooperation of the consul courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights. The assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the consul courts. The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to the United States nationals. Otherwise than by enforcement through the consul courts. Of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required.
Okay, let's go back to this second point. The second way, talking jurisdiction, in which the problem arises is in cases in which. The cooperation of the consul courts is required. In order to enforce Moroccan legislation, did you catch that? Moors cannot enforce Moroccan laws on the United States of America without consul court. And you can't have a consul court without a provincial state government. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights. The assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the consul courts, remember now. This is the I C J dealing with France, the United States. They're telling France, I C J is telling France, you go through consul court to deal with this. Only way to enforce something on the United States of America, you have to go through consul court. That's an application of difference. Did a judge Moroccan law sign off on his nineteen forty-eight trade agreement? And did you have a dispute and take it to consul court? The answer is no. So according to the contract, the I C J is looking at the contract, what are the instructions, France? What are the instructions, the United States of America? When you have a dispute, consul court. What should Moors learn from this? Moors, since the year nineteen thirteen at the very least. Have been putting applications of difference on the record. To challenge the jurisdiction of the United States of America or the United States municipal corporation. Were they using consul court? No. Moors now are claiming that they have consul courts now. But if they're the consul. But guess what? That's called de facto. We already learned in this I C J report, the I C J threw out France's court. Cause they were claiming they had competent consul courts in Morocco, I C J said. Man, threw it out. Moors must understand the difference between de facto and de jour. Let's look it up. Let's read the definition of de facto. Before we start reading de facto, what are we talking about right now? Status. Everything is status. Your status is either de facto or it is de jour, there is no in-between. Either real or you're fake. We're talking Santa Claus right now. Santa Claus is de facto, why is Santa Claus de facto? We're gonna learn that de facto means a fact, it's a fact. Santa Claus is real, ask a child. Santa Claus, we see Santa Claus at the mall every year, we see Santa Claus on T V every year. Some children even write Santa Claus letters and send it to North Pole, it is a fact that Santa Claus is real. But is it true? No, he's a fiction. The truth is, the parent is Santa Claus, so it's a fact, yes, he's real, but is it true? No. Let's learn about Moors, how does that relate to Moors? Moors and that de facto status is Santa Claus. You're real. But according to international law, you're a fiction. You're what you call patently frivolous, arbitrary and capricious of what you're putting on the record. Because you're illegitimate based upon your government status, let's prove it, mother, if you can read de facto.
De facto, in fact, indeed, actually. This phrase is used to characterize an officer, a government, a past action or a state of affairs. Which must be accepted for all practical purposes, but is illegal or illegitimate. In this sense, it is the contrary of de jour, which means rightful, legitimate, just or constitutional. Thus, an officer, king or government de facto is one who is in actual possession of the office or supreme power. But by usurpation or without lawful title. While an officer, king or governor de jour is one who has just claimed and rightful title to the office or power. But has never had plenary possession of it or is not in actual possession.
Alright, what did we learn about de facto? Let's think on multiple levels, applies to Moors. De facto, de facto means of fact, it's a fact, there's a big difference between fact and truth. In fact. Indeed. Actuality, factually. Colleges have deeds, do they have possession or do they have ownership? Deeds are in fact, in their opinion, ownership. But the truth is, they don't own it because they're not a modium. This phrase is used to characterize an officer. A government, de facto officer, de facto government. De facto past action or de facto state of affairs. Which must be accepted for all practical purposes, but is illegal or illegitimate. So the United States of America is illegal. And Moors claiming to have a government that do not have a constitution, state, no elections, no inauguration. No type of open allegiance, no flag, no seal, or what? Illegitimate because they're de facto, yes, it's a fact, you got a government. It's illegitimate government, why? Why? Because now governments must be based upon ballots, votes for the people, by the people, you can't be self-appointed. In this sense, it is the contrary of de jour. De jour means of truth. Which means rightful, legitimate, just or constitutional. Moors don't have a constitution, then you're illegitimate, you're a de facto. The United States of America, in order to make them bound to the treaty, you must have Counselor Court. You can't have Counselor Court unless you have a constitution that creates your state. If you don't have a constitution that creates your state, then you are de facto. Does an officer, king, or government de facto is one who is in actual possession of the office or supreme power, but by usurpation or without lawful title? Moors don't have lawful title. What do I mean when I say that? International law says in order for you get title, your title comes from what? The state. That's international law. Lawful title. All Moors have title, that's your consequency. But what's the lawful title? International law. While an officer, king, or governor de jour is one who has just claimed and rightful title to the office or power, but has never had plenary, plenary, plenary possession of it, or is not in actual possession. What's happening? Moors right now, why are we talking about this? Because we're talking about the ICJ report. ICJ just told us how to have, get our sovereignty back, is through Counselor Court. And as long as Moors are de facto, because they don't have a constitution, that means we do not have the legitimate power to make a claim. Let's learn about de jour. What is de jour? Just a second. All right, mother.
De jour, of right, legitimate, lawful, by right and just title. In this sense, it is, it is the contrary of de facto. It may also be contrasted with de gratia, in which case it means as a matter of right, as de gratia means by grace or favor. Again, it may be contrasted with desiquité, here meaning by law, as the latter means by equity, see government.
De jour is a right, legitimate, lawful. What type of lawful? International law. By just title, what title? The title that you get through your constitution as officers. That's the just title. What's the most important word here? See government. De jour means you must have a government. What, what are we talking about right now? Status. Capacities and incapacities of Moors is between two choices. We're talking choice again. Either you're going to be de facto, or you're going to be de jour. How do you become de jour? You must have a provincial government. Taj Sri Bay has been teaching us is status. Moors want to be to make the United States of America bound to the treaties? Anything to the contrary notwithstanding, then guess what? Moors have been doing things that are notwithstanding. I don't say that as a negative. We're all here seeking remedy because Moors got pain. But guess what? There is a cure. How do you cure this? It's called the renunciation, a capitulation, and extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is all in your head. When they say you got a headache, you take a pill. What's the pill? You must swallow the understanding of politics. Status creates your capacities and incapacities. Who have we been learning that from? Taj Sri Bay. Let's talk about this, Moors. First nationality, Moors got that. Oh, we all about the nationality. But we understand as soon as you have a nationality, it comes with obligations. Obligations to what? Now stand on the principles of being a Moroccan, a Moor. But what comes along with that next? Now you want jurisdiction. You want to make claims? Okay, you're talking jurisdiction. What creates the jurisdiction? Creating a constitution. The constitution creates the state. But once you create the constitution, you must be cognizant to understand now you're talking about putting together politics. What's the politics? You got to put together the officers of your government, the three branches of government. Legislature branch, executive branch, judicial branch. Now you put together your balance and you have elections. After your elections, you have public inaugurations. After you have public inaugurations, you have your oath and allegiances to said government now put together. Birth records, et cetera. Now you've created the state so it can function and be legitimate. Your sovereignty comes through the state. The state creates the status. State. Status. State. Stat. State. Status. State. State. State is the status. The status is the state. Appropriate persona creates now the other political documents. After this jurisdiction, we're talking about what? Venue. Jurisdiction sets up the venue. What jurisdiction? Of your state, your latitude, longitude. Once you have your latitude, longitude that's in your constitution. It creates the state boundaries. Now you're using the proper venue when that's disputes. What's the proper venue? Counselor Court. We're learning that from the ICJ. What do you do with Counselor Court? You're dealing with adjudications. What adjudications? Okay, now this is where you start studying international law. How do you enforce your rights through your sovereignty is what? You're dealing with judicial notice through Counselor Court. You're dealing with judicial order through Counselor Court. Then you're dealing with contempt of court if they're not following judicial order. Now you have an opportunity to exercise what's called Article one oh two of the Act of Algiers. Article one oh two goes directly into what? Fines, penalties, confiscations on who? Orders. But you'll never get here if you don't create the state. The state is the most important element to what's going on right now. The ICJ is trying to give Moors the answer to the test is Counselor Court. But they're not going to turn around and tell you, oh, by the way, when you understand politics, you got to set up a government first. Moors have to catch this. So I'm going to go back to my question again. What is the name of your provincial government? Once Moors start being able to answer that question on the record, for the record, through their constitution, we'll start now to get remedy because the ICJ is trying to tell us. From the top one, please.
The second way in which the problem arises is in, is in cases in which the cooperation of the Counselor Courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation.
Hey, stop. Read that sentence again, one, two more times.
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Counselor Courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. The second way, excuse me, the second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Counselor Courts is required in order to, to enforce the Moroccan legislation.
Stop. Moors. Counselor Court is required. Counselor Court is required. Counselor Court is required to do what? Enforce Moroccan legislation. It's the answer to the test. This is what Taj Sri Bay has been trying to tell us. Noble Dua Lee told us we need what? Constitution. Taj Sri Bay says what? Enforce Counselor Court through your constitution. International law told us what? But we need a state. Continue.
The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to United States nationals otherwise than by enforcement through the Counselor Courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required.
Let's read that again, mother.
The third way in which the problem arises is in cases where the application to United States nationals otherwise than by enforcement through the Counselor Courts of Moroccan laws which do not violate any treaty rights of the United States is in question. In such cases, assent of the United States authorities is not required.
Stop. What's happening? Taj Sri Bay tells us all the time, Moors are not supposed to be in municipal courts. That is the truth. Why? Because the proper venue is Counselor Court. We never asked the United States of America for permission to be in our own proper person or in our own proper jurisdiction or in our own proper venue. If they don't want to come to Counselor Court to deal with their application of dispute, their application of difference, i.e. civil or criminal matter, that's their choice. The matter then becomes moot. However, if in fact, Moors are dealing with, need to give judicial notice, then do so. Because the United States of America is obligated through Counselor Court to settle all disputes, is vice versa. Moors got a problem in the United States of America, Counselor Court is the answer. The United States of America got a problem with Moors, Counselor Court is the answer. There's no workaround. The ICJ is making it clear, in order to enforce disputes, is Counselor Court. And as it relates to assent, we don't need their permission to send out judicial notices, judicial orders, or contempt of court in order to now enforce fines, penalties, and confiscations as long as what? Our status is correct. When your status is correct, the ICJ will accept what you're doing to enforce said status. As soon as your status is de facto, then you are acting outside the law, which makes you an outlaw, i.e. de facto. But as long as everything Moors are doing is de jour, meaning you got the proper status, the appropriate persona, which now sets up the jurisdiction of your constitutional state, now sets up the venue, sets up adjudication, you go right into enforcing Counselor Court. ICJ is telling us this. And you don't need the United States of America's permission, consent, or anything. Why? They already signed the treaty. Not once, not twice, three times. What do I mean? Articles of Confederation. They signed the first treaty through the Continental Congress. That was number one. And George Washington came around two years later and changed it to what? The United States of America, they had to agree again. That's the second time that these colonists were cognizant of this treaty. Then they renewed the treaty in eighteen thirty-six. And each time, they accepted Article twenty and twenty-one, as well as twenty-four. There's no workaround. That's what the ICJ is saying here. You don't need permission for the United States of America. They already gave permission through those treaties. Let's continue. Hold up, before we continue, please, mother, if you can say this last sentence three times for me, please.
In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required. In such cases, the assent of the United States authorities is not required.
Thank you, mother. Assent means permission. We do not need permission of the United States of America. All right, mother.
Accordingly, and subject to the foregoing qualifications, the court holds that the United States is not entitled to claim that the application of laws and regulations to its nationals in the French zone requires its assent.
So what's happening? So in the French zone, France didn't have to get permission. And in Morocco, Moors don't have to get permission. Why? Because they're all talking about the same contract. What's the contract? Treaty of peace and friendship. All three parties, who are the three parties? France, the United States of America, and Moors. Talking about the same contract. They're all bound to the treaty as a supreme law of the land. All right. What we're going to do, we're going to stop here. We're not going to get into this next section to talk about the government of the United States of America has submitted a counterclaim, a part of which relates to the question of immunity from Moroccan taxes in general. Why are we not going to talk about that? Moors don't need to be talking about how we're going to tax the Europeans right now. Let's first figure out, how do we get back appropriate persona to get our status correct to create our provincial government? We'll get back to this subsection of the ICJ report of France versus the United States of America some other time. That might be twenty videos from now, maybe thirty. First, let's figure out how to get our foundation together, okay? So let's do this. Let's talk a little bit about the right of indigenous people. As we found out, rights of indigenous people, Article thirty-eight. When we were reading the ICJ report, the ICJ was making mention saying that it is customary that the foreign states go back and create legislation. This is what George Washington was talking about, remember that. George Washington said, "In the course of the approaching winter, the national legislators," there are three branches of government, "which is called by the former name of Congress, i.e. the Continental Congress, "will assemble and shall take care that nothing be omitted "that may be necessary to call the correspondence between our countries "to be maintained and conducted in a manner agreeable to your majesty "and satisfactory to all the parts concerned in it." What's happening with this? The United States of America had an obligation to go back and through their government, put it into law. Why are we going over this right now? As Moors start to understand, putting together their states, Moors must understand, you by law have to go back. And in fourth section B, this is the Vienna Convention nineteen sixty-nine, you have to now, when you create your states, you have to go back and accept through or accession of what? Meaning which case the international act so named whereby a state establishes on the international plane is consent to be bound by a treaty. All Moors, when you start to create your state, all Moors have to now come back and accept the accession of all the treaties, all the conventions, and all of the declarations from the United Nations, as well as your constitution, that should go without being said. All of that is brought into your government. You must understand that all the Moors in their state must have all the treaties on file that you're going to abide by, and you're bound to that said treaty, declaration, convention, and your constitution. Why are we going over this right now?
Because that's what we're doing right now.
Yes. Washington, the United Nations say in the rights of indigenous people, Article thirty-eight, watch this. "States in consultation and cooperation with indigenous people, i.e. Moors, "shall take the appropriate measures, including legislative measures, "to achieve the ends of this declaration." What are they saying? That all states, the United States of America, including Moors states, must include legislative measures. What is that? You must accession and acceptance of said declaration, convention, or treaty, and make it your local law. Even though it's international, it becomes a part of your state provincial government. You accept to be bound by it. It can't be your mere expression. It must be a material fact. It can't be your mere expression. It must be a material fact on the record. Okay? This is very important for Moors to understand, the rights of indigenous people is teaching us government. Article forty. Indigenous people, Moors. Moors have the right to access to and promote decisions through just and fair procedures for the resolution of conflicts and disputes with states or other parties, as well as to effective remedies for all infringements of their individual and collective rights. Such a decision shall give due consideration to the customs, traditions, and rules and legal systems of the Moors concerned and international human rights. What's happening here? They're talking counsel court. They're talking article one oh two of the Act of Al Jusseris. Listen. Moors have the right to access to the prompt decision through just and fair procedures for resolution of conflicts. What's the just? What is the prompt decision? Through just and fair procedures? That's counsel court. You immediately, when the United States of America is not abiding by the treaty, they're breaching the treaty. You immediately go right into adjudication. What's adjudication? You're dealing with this through the court. What does the court do immediately? Send out judicial notice. You have X amount of days to cure said dispute. If the United States of America or any foreign state is now still encroaching and breaching that contract, you go immediately to a judicial order. Now you say, okay, now this is the order. I gave you notice to deal with this under what's called arbitration and mediation to bring the dispute into counsel court. If they fail to do so, you immediately go into judicial order. What is a judicial order? Injunctive relief. And the injunctive relief says, stop everything you're doing foreign, bring it into counsel court according to the treaties. They do not abide by that, you immediately go into contempt of court, and you immediately now set forth fines, penalties, and confiscations. Wait a minute. This is not applicable to de facto Moors. What am I saying? Moors and ICJ has spoken. They said you cannot enforce anything on the United States of America unless you're using counsel court. But you must be a de jour counsel court. Moors claim they want remedy? Moors claim they want to fix this? My question to you, Moors, is, what's the name of your provincial state government? Because as soon as you can answer that question, you're telling me now you're poised to deal with counsel court? And deal with adjudication of now enforcing your sovereign rights? Because your sovereign rights under article one oh two of the Act of Al Jusseris of nineteen oh six says you can now set forth fines, penalties, and confiscations. The rights of indigenous people is saying it right here. Moors have the right to access to the prompt decision through just, which was just, judicial. And fair procedures for the resolution of conflicts, that's disputes, disputes with states. Because the rights of indigenous people is expecting Moors to understand by the time they get to article forty, you already understand you need a state. So a state on state dispute, all the parties, who's the other parties? When Moors are dealing with de facto municipal corporations? I.e. third states of what we learned. Those are the other parties. As well as effective remedies for all infringements of their individual and collective rights. Such a decision shall give due consideration to the customs. What's the custom? The treaty. What's the tradition? The treaty. What is the rule? The treaty. What's the legal system? Counselor court. Of the Moors concerned and international human rights. You got an international human right to use counsel court as a remedy, a recourse, redress in dealing with the United States of America, but the ICJ has spoken. This is the remedy. As long as you're de jour. Moors have to understand this. I'm gonna ask the question again. Moors. What is the name of your provincial government? Anpack. We want all Moors to be able to tell us their acronym. We want all Moors to tell them their full appellation of their alonio name of their state. When Moors can proudly come out and tell us the name of their provincial government, i.e. their state, we know they're poised to have full powers of what? International law. You're poised. ICJ already gave you permission to use it. The UN already gave you permission to use it. It's article forty. Don't be afraid, Moors. It's time for us to increase our level of degrees. Like Taj Sri Bay said. When we were studying state statutes. When we were studying the constitution of the United States of America, one of the first things Taj said was we need to understand the principles of government. We were so far detached, first we had to learn government. Who told us to learn government first? Nobu Druali. Now that Moors have learned government, understand the one, two, threes, and ABCs of statutes. Enforcing the constitution of the United States of America, it was all practice. It was all an exercise to get us mentally prepared to understand the principles of enforcing law. Now we must understand, it's time to go to the next level. And enforce international human rights through international law. On which you must understand. Under treaty of Vienna, the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty nine. You must have a state. Article one, mother, can you please read it three times for me, please?
Article one, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states. Article one, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states. Article one, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between states.
Thank you, mother. State. Status. Stat. Stat. Stateses. States. They're talking to us. Yes, it's a political word. It's political in nature. Yes, the word state is a middleman. It is not organic in character. You are organic. Moors are organic. But the world has changed. Now everything is through politics. The rights of indigenous people explains that to us. Let's go to it. Read it, mother, please.
Article five, indigenous peoples have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully, if they so choose, in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
The state sets up your politics. The politics sets up the state. But only if Moors choose. The ICJ has spoken. They gave us the answers to the test. The only way to enforce our sovereign rights is through the state. But we must understand sequential order. I say what I'm about to say with love. Moors must understand. That when you start talking about that we have counsel courts, and that you're consul, and that we have consulates. A consulate is a byproduct of what? A government. Because you're talking jurisdiction. Because Moors said they checked the box nationality, they went straight into what? Jurisdiction, talking about a consulate. But a consulate is designated by a constitution of its government. De jour, see government. But what type of government? A legitimate government. And Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political government that creates the law. Then it creates the economic, social, cultural institutions. While retaining the right to participate fully, that means equal, if they so choose to do it right. Then your political, economic, social, and cultural life must come through the state. If Moors don't understand that, we will always remain to be de facto, which means we don't have a right of claim. We have a de facto claim. And the ICJ has already told the United States of America, when Moors make a claim in de facto, you don't have to listen to them. When Moors make a claim in their de jour, you better listen up. Because they're going to reinforce article five and article thirty eight and article forty. So what did the Moors do? Article thirty eight. Moors are responsible for article thirty eight. We gotta go with this, make it redundant. Moors, once they have a state and consultation and cooperation with Moors, all states, including Moors, shall take the appropriate measures, including legislative measures. Accession, acceptance of your own law. You can't enforce law if you don't have no laws, Moors, in your state. To achieve the ends of this declaration, you must have your own laws. But once you have your own laws, Moors, let's make this redundant. United Nations giving us permission to move forward enforcing said law. But what is that law? Moors have the right to assess. Excuse me, access. Either one. Assess to the prompt decision through just and fair procedures. What makes you just and fair? Being de jour. For the resolution of conflicts. Moors want resolution of conflicts? Moors want to get rid of their pain? Be de jour. To deal with what? Dispute with states or other parties, municipal corporations. As well as to effective remedies for all infringements of their individual and collective rights. See, effective remedies? You want effective remedies? Be de jour. Have a provincial government. You need a state. Such a decision shall give due consideration to the customs. You see what you? IC, uh, United Nations saying? Such a decision shall give due consideration to the customs. United Nations saying what? We're going to back you, Moors. Because you're maintaining the customs and traditions and rules of the legal system. What's the legal system? Counselor court. Of the Moors that are concerned as long as they using international human rights through international law. So Moors. We must be de jour. What is the name of your provincial government? I am with that.